All right. Thank you for waiting for us and our delayed, well, really delayed meeting of several days. We'll start with saluting the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. I think we'll do a roll call also. I realize we have somebody on Zoom with us, so we should do that. Okay, I'll go ahead and begin. I'm going to start with Supervisor Madron. Okay, while he's coming up, I will go with Supervisor Bass.
Here.
Supervisor Bone.
Happy to be here.
And Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
Supervisor Madron, are you still there? Well, currently, we have three, and do you see him on there? He's on there. There he is. He's unmuting. You're there, Steve?
Hello, can anybody hear me?
Yes.
This is Steve Madron.
You're here. Welcome. Thank you. So we have four. Yes. All right. So with that.
Hello, hello. Can anyone hear me? I'm not getting any sound coming out of his room. Yeah. Hey, Tom, what's up?
I can hear you, Steve.
They're working on it, Steve.
Okay, so I figured technical difficulties, huh?
Supervisor Madron, can you hear us?
Yes, I can now. Thank you.
I just love technology.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
So we've got technical difficulties. That's why nothing's feeding out.
All right, we'll figure that out. So at this point, I'll see if there's any modifications to the agenda.
Thank you, Chair Bass. There are three modifications. Item D2 and D29 will be pulled for discussion. Item D23 will be pulled from the calendar altogether and will return on January 10.
All right. So I wanted to make a motion to approve the consent calendar minus those items.
I'll make a motion.
You have a second? Thank you. I could have it. Thank you, Steve. We can hear you. All right. So with that, we'll go to public comment on the consent calendar minus those two items. And is there anyone on the phone that has their hands raised, since my computer will not come up?
Yes, Madam Chair. We have the first caller, 7245.
7245, you said? 7245, press star 6 to end mute, and you'll have affirmed three minutes on the consent calendar.
Yes, I accidentally raised my hand for this. I didn't want to be in public comment.
Okay, this is actually on the consent.
It's for a different item.
Okay, which item are you looking for?
D2. It was pulled.
Okay, perfect. We'll come back to that.
Okay, thanks.
Is there anyone else? Are there hands up? Yes, Chair Bass, we have 7454. All right, 7454, press star 6 to end mute.
And yes, I did intend to call in. I'm 110% sure I am. So thank you for the opportunity to speak on this. I hope I don't speak on ones that you pulled there that went by really fast. Maybe you can repeat that when I'm done speaking, so other people may not speak on it. Item 7, I found kind of interesting on consent, D7. That's AT&amp;T was mentioned in something. And back during the prior thing, you have anticipated litigation. So they're anticipating suing you, but we're doing contracts with them. I don't know how that comes into play, AT&amp;T, and has all kinds of different things, but I always find that interesting. I don't usually do business with people that are going to sue me. I did item 21. I was really pleased to see that you did have the consent items on here, because this was the call I raised to all of your employees, I believe, or a good share of them. And they were kind of promised that this pay period would go in and be entered at the higher pay level, I think, so their first paycheck would reflect that come next year. And I call that a Christmas turkey, and if you hadn't moved forward on consent with this, then you would have offered a turkey and then not come through with it. So that's not a good thing. Let's see. I think the other one, and I think that whole thing was $979,727. So I think 23 got postponed to another time. That's a good thing. Hopefully we'll hear about it the other time regarding $2.680 million grant being applied for. And I think that pretty well does it as far as what I wanted to make comment on in consent. And again, if you could repeat the ones that have been pulled that we'll be dealing with, I would appreciate that. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
All right, thank you. Is there any other hands up?
Yes, Madam Chair, I have 0116.
0116, if you want to comment on the consent calendar. This is the time. Press star.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, welcome, Ash.
Hello, this is Ash Teeter with the Lost Coast Populous.com. I'm commenting on the consent calendar concerning the AB 361 continuation of the emergency Zoom hybrid meetings. I think it's a great idea to have the meetings, you know, hybrid like they are, but I think having them under the pretext of COVID is just entirely unnecessary, just because of the total farce that it's turning out to be. Recently, I don't know if anybody's been paying attention to the Twitter files, but Anthony Fauci came out and admitted that his daughter worked for Twitter and spoke, you know, and he spoke directly to Zuckerberg during, you know, his censorship deposition. So this is all part of the, you know, government collusion, like guiding the narrative on what people can and can't say on multiple things, but, you know, especially concerning, you know, COVID. There was a lot of that going on, you know, regarding what was fake supposedly. Another thing that popped up was, yeah, like the FTX, like that scandal. I guess they were heavily involved in funding vaccine research, biotech engineering, and other globalist depopulation agendas through the scientific research community. Hundreds of grants and investments totaling around $132 million.
Actually, Ash, you're going a little far afield of the item that's on the consent. So if you can just steer yourself back to that item specific, that would be great.
Okay, well, I'll get back to it. Like, keeping the hybrid meetings in place is good, but, you know, referring it in the context of a COVID emergency is just not necessary. I mean, we need to, like, drop the whole COVID emergency thing altogether in the county. It's turning out to be pretty ridiculous. My experience with the Eureka City Council is another illustration of this with Miles Slattery. He's in charge of their vaccine mandate.
Actually, you need to keep it on this item as far as the meetings, okay, Ash? Just trying to, I'm getting the side eye by the attorney, saying we're going a little far afield.
Okay, well, that relates to it, because Miles said that he, you know, highly bases his opinion on the Public Health Department. And that's a county thing, right?
Kind of sounded squishy there.
Yeah, well, I'm.
County Council, Miles, did you want to weigh in on this?
The comments should be limited to the AB 361 resolution extending the virtual meeting exemptions set forth in the Brown Act.
And not about all COVID policy, I think is what he's saying. Sorry about that, Ash.
Okay, well.
Okay. You still have 30 seconds, if you, no? No, he doesn't. Oh, I'm sorry. I was mistaken. It stopped here. Won't set that. Okay. This is a fun way to start the day.
Okay, all right. I thought I was just entirely cut off there.
Well, and actually, you had your three minutes. We're having technical difficulties too, Ash, so I do apologize, but you were kind of going back and forth. So, but you can call in on another item as long as you stick to that item, okay?
Okay, will do. Thank you.
All right. Is there anyone else with a hand up? No. Is there anyone in the audience here that wanted to speak on anything on the consent calendar minus any of the items that were pulled?
There is.
That's pulled. All right. So with that, I think we're ready to vote, aren't we? Supervisor Madron is still with us, right? He is still with us. Okay, Supervisor Madron.
Yes.
Supervisor Bass?
Yes.
Supervisor Bushnell? Yes.
And Supervisor Bone?
DM4.
Thank you. Motion passes 4-0.
All right. So I'm going to go on to the items pulled from consent. Do we have, did you see if Lee's out there yet?
I told him what to say.
Okay, so I'd like to go to D29. And so with that, I'll go to the CAO, if you wouldn't mind, reading that item, just.
Yeah, sure. Item D29 is a ratification of the local emergency proclamation due to the 6.4 magnitude earthquake that occurred on December 20. And in the audience today is Sheriff Hansel and OES manager Ryan Derby, as well as some of his friends with Cal OES who can provide us with an update on the state of affairs in the county.
Absolutely. Thank you for bringing this item up and for us ratifying the emergency here.
That's not on.
This is not on.
It's not me. Whoever, they're both pushed in. Okay. Try, can you do it now?
Testing 1, 2.
I pushed both buttons, okay. Down again. Try again. Nope.
Can I do this one over here?
I think everyone's supposed to have a meeting today.
All right, we're going to go right here. I'm going to have a seat, since it's been a couple of long days. Awesome. Well, I'm here. Joining me with our Office of Emergency Services manager, Ryan Derby, as well as our cohort with California Office of Emergency Services. So I really appreciate all the support. At this point in time, in a declared emergency, we are all hands on deck. And I have, again, Ryan Derby here. He'll be able to give us the details as far as how the county is responding to the emergency and how we're supporting the emergency. In event and emergency now, we do response and recovery simultaneously. And the goal here at the early and in these type of events is trying to figure out the needs of the communities that are affected the most. Our number one need and our priority is our people. That is our number one priority. And so we are going to continue to do everything possible to make sure that they are housed, that they are fed, that they have water, and all those essential things that they need in the communities that are most affected. And so we're bringing in every resource that we possibly can. And then I just want to also thank this board for being so attentive. Michelle, your district. Rex, your district has been affected the most. I appreciate you guys reaching out and being on boots on the ground. Also, Senator Maguire, some member Wood, as well as Congressman Huffman. And the governor's office as well has all reached out and said, what do you need? We are all there, ready to respond. And so I really appreciate that partnership, both local, county, and state. So with that, I would like to turn it over to Ryan Derby, who will give us an update on our response.
Thank you, Sheriff.
It's on. Thanks, Sheriff, members of board. I'm just going to provide a brief update on the status of where we're at with the Emergency Operations Center and some of the efforts that we've been coordinating. Currently, the Emergency Operations Center is staffed and activated at a Level 2, which is a moderate or medium level activation. Our primary role right now is the coordination of public information and resource acquisition, resource tracking from all the various levels of the standardized emergency management system. So we're working with the cities, getting those requests into the county, relaying them up to the region and up to the state for acquisition, and tracking it, making sure they get to the right place and to the right people. In addition to that, we are working on initial damage estimates with the various cities, trying to get some rough estimate of all the damage that's occurred, basically separating it out into different buckets, so we can financially track and submit to that, that report to the state, and hopefully get us back to some semblance of stability here in the coming days or weeks. As of today, power restoration has been extremely successful. We now have less than 10 customers throughout the county that remain without power. And PG&E has been in contact with us frequently. They're confident that they're going to be able to get full restoration. They're continuing to assess some gas connections, and will likely have some ongoing inspections and some cleanup work for the coming days. But we're looking very, very good from a power standpoint. Now that we have good communication with the city of Rialto, they've been down with Verizon and down with their Wi-Fi the last couple of days, but that's picked back up today. We're hearing reports that their water system is now back connected to over 50% of the city, and they're making some additional progress today, hoping to continue that down the hill and get more people connected. Rialto, the entire city of Rialto remains under a boil water notice, as well as several locations in Fortuna. My understanding is Fortuna is working to get that back online, and Rialto is really charging forward to get their connections back up and get people back to some semblance of normal. We do have a sheltering operation continuing at the Fireman's Pavilion in Fortuna at 9 Park Street. As of last night, we only had one overnight count. It's, all the reports that we've been getting are that people are finding additional accommodations, either with friends, family, or due to the local hotels that are offering some comp rooms very generously. With that being said, if the shelter need, if we continue to not see a large number of people registering for the Red Cross Shelter, that site may be stood down, but we'll be having Red Cross put on standby. And they've assured us that if we call them with a need for sheltering, they'll be able to come back within two hours to staff that back up. So we're working on setting those contingencies moving into the holiday weekend, hoping to get some volunteers, some off time, and some of the staff that's been working out in the field, some downtime with their families. But as long as there's a need out in the community, we'll have people there providing services. That's the end of my report. I would like to introduce our visiting state members. We have our senior emergency services coordinator, Jennifer Gordon, here from Cal OES Region 2.
Welcome, Jennifer.
Thank you. Thank you very much. As Ryan said, my name's Jennifer Gordon. I'm a senior emergency services coordinator with the California Governor's Office of Emergency Services. My responsibility is the northern eight counties in coastal region, which is also a mutual aid region, too, if anybody is familiar with that. Currently, I'm also serving as the emergency services coordinator for Humboldt and Delnart Counties. So immediately when this happened, I got in the car and headed up. So I just wanted to let you know that we are here. We have a, we have a pretty large team up here from Cal OES. I have members of my executive team here and recovery teams with me today. We are working very closely with the county to identify needs and mobilize and bring up any resources that you need. And we just, I just wanted to introduce myself and our team to let you know that we're here to support you in any way that you need. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. And just to kind of reiterate the message from our EOC, our role is to be that conduit from the local to the region to the state. So if any of the affected communities need something, they can reach out to us. We'll make sure that we can find it or find someone that knows how to get it. So we're asking our cities to ask early, ask often. And Cal OES has been instrumental in getting resources pre-staged and brought up here quickly. So that's kind of the message I'd like to end with.
All right. Anyone else to add? I know there's some supervisors who have a few comments. And Supervisor Bushnell?
Thank you. I want to really thank the sheriff and Ryan and the teams. It's been, the communication with me has been great. And I, this is my first time doing this. And so I've been blowing their phones up, and they've been receptive. So thank you. I want to thank PG&E. They did an amazing job getting the power back on to the communities. And the both cities, Merritt and his team, and Kyle and his team, pretty amazing what they've had to deal with. And the fire department, Shane Wilson in Rialto, he's had a lot to do, but been running on zero sleep. And his team has been amazing. There's lots of people to thank. The communities themselves have just really poured out and just helped people that they could. Cal OES, thank you. It's very nice to meet you yesterday. And what you bring for Humboldt, I appreciate. And to Rex, too. I've called him a million times. What do we do? Where do we go? Who do I find? So I really want to thank him for being a person that I can really lean on.
Supervisor Bone?
Yeah, there'll be more of them, too. No, it's, yeah, Cal OES, thank you, guys. You guys add some stability to it, because it is somewhat, it doesn't happen very often. Russ, you guys live for this stuff. And all the people, as you mentioned. But I think the amazing part and that happens on every one of these is all the small businesses that are affected. I have single owner businesses. We're calling them up, hey, do they need this? Do they need that? I says, have you cleaned your store up yet? He says, no, but I'm getting there. And it's just, it's just that reach out that's been really good. I know Michelle and I both got phone calls within a half hour from our state representatives. I got the trifecta today. I got Woods, Huffman, and Maguire asking what they can do. And I says, just send us money without a bunch of strings and let us fix the houses. Bingo. It's going to be easy. Don't put a lot of restrictions on it. And don't, I says, don't pound us with paperwork, because it's just, because we're going into January, and, you know, we're going to end up, when it's all said and done, we're going to have 150 houses probably red tagged. I say minimum. And I think, I think we can fix that quick, because we're Humboldt and we do that. But, you know, and Michelle did really well. Just settle down. It'll happen. Don't worry. So, because there'll be another earthquake. Don't waste it all on this one. But, I mean, no, it's good. And it's been fun to watch her do that. I was very fortunate this time around. It went under Ferndale and didn't cause a lot of damage. I was out there by 4 o'clock that morning, and fire department, the police department were going, we felt kind of bad. We don't, we don't have any issues. Nothing. We're going to go look again. But, you know, and we were worried that morning that, you know, daylight was going to be our friend or our enemy. And it was neither. We didn't have a lot of, you know, and then Caltrans, the Ill River Bridge was, you know, Fern Bridge was a mess. And they came out and came up with a quick fix, and they, and it is stable. They cribbed it, repaved the approaches, and that was opened last night at 7:17, because I would have crossed in the first convoy. But, I mean, and that's a big deal, both to the community, the business and the community going to work, because you know, 7,500, 8,000 trips a day do not need to go over Blue Slide Road, because we had our own problems on Blue Slide Road. So, and again, the sheriff and all the first responders have extremely stepped up. As Michelle said, we're getting loads of food from Windsor. We're getting other cities rallying to want to help us. My RCRC supervisors have come out of the woodwork, saying, what can we do? And I says, order online from these people, these businesses. And I gave them a list of businesses. So, yeah, we rocked it. CAO's office, they've been going 100 miles an hour and answering all the phone calls and what ifs and what can we's and everything else. So it's, it's been up. It's, it has not been seamless, but it has not been painful. It's not painless, but it has been painful. So, again, all the way from OES down, thank you guys for being here. It means a lot, because we're up here in no man's land, so.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Thank you. Yes, Wyden Maguire, they've called me additionally, so I really want to say thank you to them. But also Connie Beck and her team, they've been there. I've called Connie. She's reached out to me so many times, and it's really been helpful for me. And I also want to thank our planning and building department. I called Director Ford and said, I need building inspectors. Can you help? He had a team of six down there. They've been working, you know, beyond their hours to help inspect those homes down there. And I just really want to thank the planning and building department and DHHS and Connie Beck and her team as well. And the CAO, thank you, Asso and Sean, for helping with the press releases down there.
So I would like to ask, I don't see a hand up for Supervisor Madron, but Supervisor Madron, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Well, I want to say that Supervisor Bone and Bushnell have done an amazing job. And we kind of dodged the bullet in the fifth, but thank you to everyone for all your hard work.
And I just want to say, I think the last big one I remembered was, actually, before I was in the board, I was running, I was at the city still, and that was 2010, when the road was buckling and my neighbor came over to check and make sure. I wondered what all the screaming was. He was my neighbor at the time. As the road was buckling, it was scary. But it was daytime, and this one happening at night, I think, just compounded a lot of the issues. And I'm very thankful for, you know, all the services and everybody that's come together. One question I keep getting, and perhaps Supervisor own, maybe your suggestion is best. People keep calling you from other communities, asking how they can give, what they should do. What is the best way to direct them? Is it to our website, and they can go from there? Or Ryan, do you have an answer for that?
Yes, Madam Chair. We, we've been putting some information out in our press releases, recommending that financial donations go to the American Red Cross to pay it forward Humboldt. Food for People is another good one. We're not asking for any material donations at this time, because we have been getting quite a few for, you know, food and necessary goods. If there is a need for material donations, we'll be asking for specific items to help kind of wrangle that in and not cause the disaster within the disaster of storage and disposal. But I can compile a list and get that out to all of you to help.
Can we add the volunteer fire departments to that list, please?
Absolutely.
Thank you. I know I had Shelter Co volunteer fire department bring 50 blankets and 50 personal kits to Rialto. And Rialto also is a volunteer department, so, and they've been working around the clock.
Absolutely.
And put out, because it's not getting out enough, the number to call for, to six, I was going to remember it, too. But the number, everybody can call, and if you can say it a couple of times now, I mean, for all services, because you've got the one, the one hotline that you can funnel all service to, the COVID line is now warm. Again, is it the same number?
So we're not using the COVID line in the EOC. Our emergency information line is 707-268-2500. That's going to come down to the Emergency Operations Center. We've got call takers down there. Our public information officers are down there, and we'll be able to answer any question related to the emergency, the services available, or where to direct funds. And we'll make sure we get those additional agencies put on that list and submitted today.
And if any of the news and media could put that number out a lot, that would, that would help quite a bit, because it's, for us to have to call somebody, it's just easier for it to happen that way. And you guys can get it to the proper channels, so.
All right. Well, I think we'll go to public comment. I do see one hand online, if I'm correct. 7454. If, 7454, press star 6 to end mute.
I'm glad you brought up John Ford in the building department. You know, I was talking to John, and he was out there personally helping to red tag those unsafe buildings down there. 150. I hadn't heard that number anywhere other than just now, but it is totally believable when these things happen. Another place I happen to be down at the animal shelter, and of course, my dogs and a lot of dogs and cats can get displaced. They run away from home this time. Somebody wants to donate on this, taking care of the animals. Our animal shelter is always a wonderful place to donate to. Also, my rescue dog I had, I think, left, left its prior living situation without on the street for a long time, so we need to take care of our pets also. For all of you that are taking care of this, it's important. We do need, and I'll bring this forward, we probably need a government-to-government consultation with the Blue Lake Rancheria. They had one of the few places with gas. Unfortunately, the people trying to get gas were backed all the way up on the highway. People were going the wrong way down roads. People had to circle around. And there is a way to fix this. They had it set up before. So hopefully, the Highway Patrol and the sheriff and everybody will work that out. So next time, we don't have vehicular accidents, and people can safely get in and out of the city of Blue Lake without having to go all the way around the back road over there by Corbel, so that direction. Anyway, thank you for the opportunity to speak, and a great job out there. And of course, we always want to learn from our successes and our mistakes in these circumstances, because everybody said it's going to happen again. That's just what it is. So thank you for the opportunity to speak.
All right, thank you. And I don't see any other hands up?
No, Madam Chair, 0116 just raised their hand.
Just now? Okay. Ash, 0116, press star 6 to unmute.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, welcome.
Yeah, I just wanted to comment on the earthquake situation and probably, not, not much the county could do about it, but one thing I've heard from a lot of people with a Verizon service is that they did not have, like, internet on their phones. Like, you know, they'd have good call service, but not really internet. So I don't know if there's any kind of, like, emergency capacity that could be added to, like, I don't know, link up for roaming for other services to Verizon, or something like that, because a lot of, a lot of information we find these days is only accessible, you know, through looking at websites. That's it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I don't see any other hands up online. Is there anyone in the audience who wanted to comment on this item? All right, seeing none. All right, seeing none. Um, Sheriff Bass, if I can make a motion? Yes, please.
Okay. So I'll make a motion that we, uh, the ratification of local emergency proclamation due to the 6.4 magnitude earthquake. And thank you, Sheriff Hansel.
Supervisor Bone wants me to second it. Okay, I'll second it. Because I can. All right. Um, any other conversation? Nope. I think we're ready to vote. Roll call vote, please.
Okay. Supervisor Bone?
Yep.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
Supervisor Bass?
Yes.
Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes 4-0.
Thank you, guys. Thanks for everything. All right. So, we're gonna go back to consent calendar item, uh, D2, which is coming to us from both myself and Supervisor Bone. And it's Retirement Resolution for Lee Roy Lawson Jr., who we made drive all the way over here from McHinleyville. So, could we have you come up? You've, you've kept the building safe and kept, kept Rex in line for years now. Just, oh, actually, and that microphone is not working, is it? Yeah, grab, sit on that, yeah. Get comfortable. I don't think these microphones have ever not worked before. All right. So we're gonna let Rex read this.
Lee, always a smiling face, a hello. And then he goes and tours the building every break, just to make sure everything's okay outside. It's a resolution from the Board of Supervisors. Whereas Lee Roy Lawson Jr. was born in Sacramento, California, and attended high school in Rio Vista. In 1968, he joined the, joined the U.S. Coast Guard and served four years as a boat swain's mate. And whereas in 1972, he attended junior college in Susanville, California. Whereas in 1978, he graduated from Humboldt State University with a forestry degree. In that same year, he was hired as a forester with Champion International out of Mapleton, Oregon. In 1995, Lee moved, Lee moved back to Humboldt County to work as a forester for Simpson Timber Company. That was back in the Jim Holmes days and everybody. In 1997, he was hired by Bailey's out of Leightonville, California, and sold timber equipment. In 2008, he retired from forestry and was hired as a security guard at the Humboldt County Courthouse for our screening services. Whereas after 14 years, he is retiring from serving the Humboldt County Courthouse. He looks forward to spending time with his wife of 53 years, his daughters, his son, and his grandchild, who he enjoys playing soccer with. Now, therefore, it be resolved that the Humboldt County Board of Supervisors hereby recognizes, honors, expresses our gratitude to Lee Roy Lawson Jr. for his years of dedication to the county, community, and wishes him a long and happy retirement full of relaxation and adventures. Signed by our Chair, Virginia Bass.
That's a collector's item. There's not many more of those left.
And there won't be anymore.
Normally, we'd have a crowd here, and we'd all be clapping.
Here, look this way. This way. And then that way. Yeah, get that out there.
I'd be in the picture, too, but Rex got down there sooner.
Okay.
Do you wanna say a few things, Lee? Oops. So, you're welcome. I have, if you want to sit, you might wanna get closer to the microphone. I have a question I've been always wanting to ask you. And I actually love your smiling face, and you'll be missed. What, oh, it should be on. Oh, you have to turn your microphone on. Where, this is a whole new process today. There you go. Um, yeah, now I'll miss, I would say I'd miss your smiling face, but I'm not gonna be in the building either, so maybe I'll run into you somewhere else. But, um, what was the most unusual thing that you found someone trying to get through security that you can possibly actually say on TV?
Oh, well, a battle axe, I guess. I have a picture of it. It was back, I looked actually, looked up the photo and showed us somebody that was gonna buy an axe for their brother. And I, I showed her, yeah, it's, it's a curved axe, like, like, used in the medieval times to go to battle with. And it was in a backpack.
That's unusual. Okay. I've always wanted to ask that question.
Okay, yeah. Cast iron skillets.
Skillets? Okay. You could write a book, probably.
Well, we, yeah, if I'd taken notes, I probably could have.
You probably chuckled a lot at what you saw through that machine.
Yeah, we do. We do. Still do.
Well, congratulations on your retirement. I only got to, uh, work with you for two years, and I'll miss, oh, it's you. I really enjoyed getting to know you. And, um, I didn't know about your forestry background. That's amazing.
Yeah, it was fun.
Yeah.
But I got too old.
Well, congratulations on your, I'm sure, second retirement, it sounds like.
Yeah, it's gonna be fun. Yeah, yeah.
You have any, what is, what are your plans?
Oh, I've been taking Thursdays off so I could pack. Yes, yeah. We're moving to Pensacola, Florida, probably in February.
Guess I won't see ya.
Yeah, that's where our daughter, our youngest daughter lives, and, you know, our only grandchild. So that's where we're headed.
That's a great idea. Get out of earthquake country. Straight into hurricane weather. Lee, like I said, I, you know, I come in and out four or five times a day, so I get to see you a lot and everything else. And the other thing is your interaction with, with our full staff throughout the whole, the whole building and the courts, and, and people going to courts that aren't always in the best of, you know, position, and carry their little pocket knife and think that's the most ridiculous thing in the world, that we're stopping them from carrying a pocket knife. And, and I, you, you handle it very well. You give them options and things like that. So I think a lot has to be said. And I think it, it's a very tedious job, and, and you have to balance a lot of things. So we certainly appreciate it. So.
Yeah, thank you.
Enjoy your retirement. You have earned this one.
Okay, yes, I have.
And we actually, and Supervisor Madron, did you wanna add something?
Yeah, it's me. You're a real treasure. You have kept us all safe, you and your team. It's always nice to see you when we come in. And I wish you all the best with your retirement. Thank you so much. And I missed you.
Okay, thank you.
And we, we do have a few people with their hands up. Some, probably some people that have passed through the line, and either you didn't let them in. All right. So we'll go to, um, 7454. Press star six to unmute.
Uh, Lee, this is the agent of chaos here. And that's what I was always announcing. You always try to come up. They're off. The agent of chaos is in the house. Uh, and so, yeah, you're, I've seen so many times when people came in either unbalanced or had other problems, and you always handled them very diplomatically. And, uh, it's a skill set to deal with those things. You're the, you were the first line of defense for everybody in that building. And, and for someone who would sit there sometimes for, you know, 30 minutes just watching what was going on, uh, you did a heck of a job. And I know you were not financially compensated correctly for what you had to put up with. And I wanna apologize that, uh, for that, because that, I don't know if that ever happened or got straightened around. But I know you had a prior situation, and then you had a, another business took over. But you hung in there right to the end. And so, thank you for your service.
Thanks, Kent.
Agent of chaos.
Agent of chaos.
All right. 7245.
Hi, it's Suzanne, and I'm calling to say that I wanted to wish Lee a very happy, uh, future in his retirement. Um, Lee and I worked together for about two years as colleagues screening individuals there at the county courthouse. And during that time, we spent probably 11 hours a day together. So it's, it was always a good day when you got to share, uh, the screen with Lee. And, uh, also, the security house team, when I was working there, we screened the first million, uh, individuals. And at that time, that was a significant amount of people that, hey, filtered through the screening process. So, yeah, there was milestones along the way. And I think that when Virginia asked about things that you found that you could say on TV, I, I'm glad that she put that little, uh, snippet in there so that he didn't say. Some of the things we found were pretty, uh, not appropriate for public. So, that was always fun, uh, working with Lee. And then, uh, like I, like I think Kent and Rex mentioned, uh, being the first line of contact, uh, for people coming into the building. Lee always had a very calm demeanor and, uh, exceptional customer service. Even after leaving and becoming a county worker myself, just coming back to the courthouse and seeing Lee is always just, it just makes it more enjoyable when you have somebody there that's helping people out and everything. So that was a testimony for, uh, for anybody coming in, because there's such a diverse, diverse community coming into the courthouse. And so, being able to address those, uh, people with the same, uh, amount of professionalism was, is a testimony to Lee's ability. So, Lee, um, I wish I could've been there in person. However, I didn't have a vehicle today. Rode in with my husband, so I'm here calling to say happy, best wishes on your retirement, and enjoy Florida and your family.
Okay, thanks, Suzanne.
Yes, thanks for calling in. Oh, my. Anyone else there? Anyone here in the audience wish to comment? I say, I was thinking, you've been through some tough times, too. I remember when you had Occupy.
Oh, yeah.
That was quite, quite the challenging time.
That was quite the experience, yeah.
And we, we've had a few other. Yeah, okay. Yeah. So you have some good memories, hopefully, and we'll miss ya, and,
I will. I'll miss, I'll miss being, seeing everybody and talking to everybody.
Well, thanks for driving in. I know you probably weren't real thrilled when.
I was kinda surprised.
That was you. Yeah, I know. I said, "Thank you." Supervisor Bone?
I'd like to make a, uh, motion to accept the resolution.
I'm gonna second it again. Apparently, that's my job today, according to my, my counterparts here. All right. I think we're ready for a roll call vote. Okay. Supervisor Madron?
Bass.
Supervisor Bass?
Yes.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
And Supervisor Bone?
Affirmative.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
And you're still here for a few days, so, right?
Yeah, I'm still here till, uh, week from tomorrow.
All right. So everyone can come in and wish Lee goodbye. How's that? All right. So our next item is going to be the retirement resolution for Assessor Mari Wilson, who told me the other day she chose not to come here. She's being shy, but we're going to read it into the record anyway. And, uh, what I'll say is Mari, um, before John Betharle and you left, he sent me a picture of when we were all sworn in. I think there were nine of us, new electeds, that, that day. And, um, so she and I are the last two of the class of 2011, I guess you might call it. So, like, I'll just drop, she may be here today. Is she on? Is she on the Zoom even? In case she did wanna say something? Oh, okay. Drop it off at her house. But anyway, so, resolution of the Board of Supervisors, County of Humboldt. Whereas Mari A. Wilson will retire as Humboldt County Assessor on December 30th after 35 years of excellent dedicated service to the County of Humboldt. And whereas, whereas Mari was hired into a clerical position in 1987 with the Humboldt County Assessor's Office and moved through several positions as an assessment technician, appraisal technician, real property appraiser, auditor appraiser, supervising auditor appraiser, and assistant assessor. And whereas Mari Wilson was elected Humboldt County Assessor in November 2010 and reelected in 2014 and 2018. And whereas Mari Wilson served the California Assessor Association as Conference Committee Chair, member of the Audit, Audit, can't even talk today, Audit Committee, and a member of the Finance Committee, Mari served the Northern California Assessor Association as Secretary, Vice President, and as President in 2018. And whereas Mari Wilson provided service to the American Association of University Women, the Greater Eureka Chamber of Commerce, and was an active member of the Boys, Kiwanis, and Girls Club of the Redwoods. And whereas Mari was a key player in the County of Humboldt's Hum 21 Initiative that promotes leadership at all levels and moves the county toward the goal of becoming a higher-performance organization, her leadership, partnership, motivation, and continuous commitment has provided this effort the support it needs to continue thriving. And whereas Mari was a mentor to all staff in her department, just encouraging them to take advantage of available trainings that advance their knowledge and assessment of property, and this is a long sentence, you guys, assessment of property better serve the department and the county. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Humboldt County Board of Supervisors and the citizens of Humboldt County hereby commend and thank Mari A. Wilson for her dedication and service to Humboldt County and wish her a long, prosperous, and active retirement. So I move the resolution.
Second.
Now, these retirement resolutions are always a mouthful. But, um, really enjoyed working with you, Mari. If you're listening at all, you may not be here in person, but hopefully, you're at least listening. Supervisor Bushnell?
I also, um, you know, had the opportunity to work with Mari several times, and, um, I appreciate her, uh, knowledge and a willingness for the community. And congratulations on your retirement.
Supervisor Bone?
After work with her and her brother, so I had the whole family covered. No, yeah, Mari and I go back a long ways, long before government days. Heck of a softball player. But she's earned her, she's earned her time to go out and enjoy, uh, I think it's Mari's flat she likes to run down to and stuff like that. So, she will have fun, and certainly, uh, now she's caught up with her husband in the retirement game.
And Supervisor Madron, anything you wanted to say? I can't see the screen, so I don't know if you had, if your hand up, but.
Well, I just wanted to thank Mari for her incredible service, so many years, decades of, uh, quality service. You're a real class act. Uh, we're gonna miss you. And I wish you all the best in your retirement.
All right. Anyone online? I've seen some one hand up?
Yes.
All right. 7454. Press star six to unmute.
So, uh, I, I reached out, I attempted to reach out to both Kelly Sanders, two calls and didn't. But Mari and I had a wonderful conversation. And I'm, I'm not gonna be, say I'm 110% sure of what she may do, but the conversation was very productive. And anytime you have this kind of parting conversation, I think it's, it's, uh, it's good. Unfortunately, she's not here to, to directly. But she had some very strong feelings, you know, regarding, uh, her position, of course, which is golden, and other positions, staying, uh, elected positions. And she educated me. And I always appreciate someone who's willing to educate me that once upon a time, I believe, I recall, she said, the elections and the, uh, and the, uh, quarter's office were two separate positions, if not two separate elected positions. And, uh, we were talking about some, some ways that might be worked out. Also, we were talking about, uh, the, about the need or, or reasons for, um, cross-train and, uh, from departments. In other words, certain people can work in different departments. And I don't think she was even aware, if I recall right, there was something out there that that was a policy that hasn't been followed in the county and that really should be. And I think she said, "Well, that's one of the reasons why they were combined." So it's really nice talking to Mari, and she is really good at educating me, and I appreciate, you know, the fact that she was willing to spend a little time with me. That's the kind of person she was. Uh, the one comment she made was, "It definitely should be an elected position hers." And she said, "Because, uh, because of certain things coming back and some pushback sometimes from supervisor stuff." So, thank you for the opportunity to, to say goodbye to Mari in this forum, and I had a chance before, so.
All right. Thank you. And there are no other hands up online. Is there anyone in the audience who wish to talk regarding Mari's resolution? Please come forward. Mr. Jurland. Sorry, she's not here. Well, she might be listening. Oh, she's listening. She's.
Thank you very much.
Is the microphone on? Good job. Okay.
Thank you very much for allowing me to speak. Uh, I was there when the office hired Mari, and she was an excellent employee, uh, always concerned about, uh, the public and treated the public with the greatest respect and integrity. And I'm just sorry that she's not here. I hope she's listening. Um, and I hope that Mari and Craig have as much enjoyment in their retirement as my wife, Mary, and I have had in my retirement. And I hope that Mari's retirement extends beyond my years of retirement, which next Tuesday, the 27th, I will complete 20 years of retirement. And, uh, it's been great. Uh, we've enjoyed it. We've had good times, some wild rides like, uh, this past Tuesday morning at quarter to three. Let me tell you, that was, as I like, some of you may not know what an e-ticket ride is, but in the early days of Disneyland, the rides were pretty wild. And, uh, I definitely said that was, to my wife, that was an e-ticket ride. But, uh, any case, uh, congratulations, But any case, congratulations, Mari. Well deserved. Enjoy your time. Thank you.
Juan, thank you for coming. As you, you're one of the few, people don't realize we're even having a meeting today. Might be why there's not many. Anyone else care to comment on this one? All right. Go back to the board. I moved the resolution. You had a second. Supervisor Bone?
I figured former Assessor Jurland would remind the audience not to worry. I think it's in the state constitution that the Assessor's Office will always be elected, so. It's always kind of nice to look at that stuff, so I don't think we're gonna change that one.
Good information. All right. I think we're ready to vote. Okay, Supervisor Bone?
Yes.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
Supervisor Bass? Yes. And Supervisor Madron? Thank you. Motion passes 4-0. All right, so now we're going to do the retirement resolution for Clerk Recorder Kelly Sanders. And instead of me reading everything, I have asked Supervisor Bushnell to take this one on.
Resolution of the Board of Supervisors, whereas Kelly Sanders, Clerk of, Clerk Recorder is a lifetime resident of Humboldt County on December 30th, 2022, Kelly will retire from the Humboldt County Clerk Recorder's Office after 17 years of dedicated service to the people of Humboldt County. And whereas in 2005, Kelly began her tenure with the County of Humboldt Clerk Recorders and Register of Voters Office as Administrative Analyst and was promoted to Elections Manager in 2007. And whereas in 2009, Kelly was certified as a California Registered Elections official by the Election Center, Houston, Texas, and California Association of Clerk and Elections Officials. And whereas in 2014, Kelly was elected Humboldt County Recorder. And whereas in her professional affiliation, Kelly has served as the Parliamentary for the County Recorder's Association of California from 2015 until her retirement. And whereas Kelly is to be commended for her exemplary dedication to civic service, she is a Board Member of the Humboldt County Elections Transparency Project, past Board Member of the Humboldt County Library Foundation, past President of Seroptimus Internationals of Humboldt Bay, and Co-Chair of the Humboldt County Walk to End Alzheimer's. And whereas Kelly's professionalism and management skills have made her an asset to the office and to the citizens of Humboldt County. And whereas Kelly, through her strong leadership and exemplary work ethics, has developed a dedicated team of departmental employees who are committed to serving the residents of Humboldt County. Now therefore, be it resolved, the Humboldt County Board of Supervisors hereby commends and thanks Kelly Sanders for her dedication and service to the citizens of Humboldt County and wishes her success in her retirement.
Would you like to move the resolution?
I'll move the resolution and also I would like to thank Kelly for all of her hard work. And since I've been elected, I've had many questions to ask her. She's been very responsive, always responsive, and has helped me tremendously with my questions. So congratulations, Kelly, on your retirement.
And. I got, I was, why do you, okay, I'll second it, just for, just so we can move, move on here. We're not gonna like not pass it or anything, I don't think. That would be interesting. She can't retire. What? Yeah, Juan, did you want to pick that up? Or are you here on behalf of Kelly? Okay, we're just checking. We're, we're very low key today since it's just us. All right, well then at that point, we will go open to public comment. Do we have any on the line at this point? No, so we'll go to those not audience. This is not the general last meeting of the year. This is a really quiet one. It's kind of a lonely meeting. Welcome.
Thank you for the opportunity to, to speak on this motion, this resolution. Kelly has, has laid an incredible foundation when it comes to how she's run these offices. I couldn't ask for a better mentor or role model going through this and I'm, I'm sad to see her go, but I'm happy for her. Yeah, you can't buy time and yeah, I wish her, I wish her the best and we'll forever be grateful for her service.
Well, thank you and big shoes to fill. Anyone else care to comment on this item that's in the audience? All right, seeing none, we'll go back. Anyone else, any hands up come up yet? All right, so then we'll go back to the board. I believe we're ready to do a roll call vote. Supervisor Bone?
Supervisor Bushnell? Yes.
Supervisor Bass? Yes. And Supervisor Madron?
Yes, and I want to say the thanks to Kelly and the incredible staff that she put together. We have the safest, most trustworthy, and competent election office in the state of California. Thank you, Kelly.
All right. So, there it is, 4-0. Motion passes. And anyone, Supervisor Wilson was not able to be with us today. I didn't say that yet, but it's probably kind of obvious at this point. So now we're gonna go on to the last item, which is, I'll say, I'll give this to Supervisor Bone, yeah. With this large crowd here today, we're gonna.
Rock us crowd.
Yeah, if there'd be more people, happy to see you go. Well, it's a bittersweet moment for me. My old neighbor, old friend, I used to deliver produce when she just had little pigtails running around her dad's restaurant when I was very young. Yeah, I'm a lot older. She beat me on the board by 18 months. But she who, she's who I've turned to a lot in the past to, to get information from. She's also the one that I'm most likely to piss off the most. You do that with good friends. So I'm a, I've got really mixed emotions on this one because I'm gonna terribly miss her. But I'm happy she's getting to move on and do some of the other things.
We're getting mood lighting right now, it looks like.
Oh baby. So I'm gonna, and whereas Virginia Bass is the resolution of the Board of Supes to a Board of Soup. Whereas Virginia Bass will retire as Humboldt County Fourth District Supervisor and Board Chair on December 30th, 2022, after 12 years of dedicated service to the County of Humboldt. Whereas Virginia is a lifelong resident of Humboldt County, operated her family's restaurant, OHS Townhouse, prior to her long and impactful career in public service. Whereas in advance of being elected to the Fourth District Supervisor seat. Trying to see. Previously held by her father. Virginia Bass served on the Eureka City Council for one and a half terms before being elected the Mayor of Eureka and serving the city of Eureka for approximately 10 years. Whereas in 2010, Virginia Bass was elected the Humboldt County Board of Supervisors, where she served the Humboldt County community for 12 years. Whereas Virginia has served on the Go Humboldt Aviation, Fly Humboldt Aviation Advisory Committee, where she focused on the need and economic benefits of airline recruitment from the Redwood Coast. In 2018, Supervisor Bass proudly announced the addition of a Eureka Arcata Airport, Eureka Arcata Airport to LAX flight. Whereas in her tenure, Virginia has served on numerous boards, commissions, affecting positive change and advocating for Humboldt County. She has held numerous positions, include Humboldt County Board of Supervisors Chair, a couple times, Commissioner and former Chair of the Humboldt, three times actually, right?
Four.
Four. Commissioner and former Chair of the Humboldt County Local Agents, LAFCO. She served on the Board Directors for Redwood Region Economic Development Commission and became the first Humboldt County official to serve as an officer for the California State Association of Cali since 1940. And she represented Humboldt County on the state level first and foremost. And I've got to see it in Washington DC numerous times, in Sacramento with her help on CSAC. And she, Humboldt was always number one. Whereas Virginia's commitment to public service does not overshadow her love for her family, especially her children and grandchildren. Now therefore, it be resolved, I don't want to resolve it. Now therefore, it be resolved that with gratitude, the Humboldt County Board of Supervisors and the residents of Humboldt County hereby commend, thank Virginia Bass for her dedication, service to Humboldt County, and wish her long, prosperous, active life after politics. I'm not gonna say retirement.
Yeah, no retirement.
I'll move this resolution.
You need another one of these.
Yes, thank you.
Reluctantly, I'll second.
Yes, thank you. Is there anyone for public comment? I'll go there first.
Yes, Madam Chair, we have 0116.
0116.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, Ash, welcome.
Oh yeah, okay, I just wanted to congratulate you on your retirement here and thank you for the, the time you put in. Paid attention to local politics for a brief microcosm since the COVID stuff hit. But in that time, you've been, you know, really just receptive and put yourself out there to just, you know, talk to people. Myself as well as others, I'm sure they appreciate you just being, making yourself open to meet in person, even, you know, give us text updates on stuff that's happening. So I just wanted to, wanted to thank you for that and congratulate you and wish you luck in your future endeavors. Thank you.
Thank you, Ash. Nikki? I, I, my phone is kaput.
No problem. We have 7454.
7454. It's your turn.
Virginia, congratulations. Long time ago, she achieved an honor. And I call that the little sister honor and I won't go into details, but that means somebody has your back and she deserved it. Privilege to have your back and to be part of what you've done for the county here. Virginia, I called a few people because nobody knew about the meeting and Richard Marks was kind of in a panic because he couldn't get through it 10 minutes after and didn't know the meeting hadn't started. So maybe Richard will have time to chime in. One thing that Virginia and I always shared was a great love of animals. Her more cats than dogs, me more dogs. So when I was in the animal shelter where they're having a special, $35 to bail out a counter dog, I thought of you there and I, I know your, your heart's always with the animals and animal meals and things like that. So don't be a stranger, you know, hang out down the shelter. I'm glad to meet you down there. And I'm sure you're kind of like me, we discussed it before, there's no better a Christmas present to give yourself than to, to help find an animal, a cat or a dog forever home. So that's kind of where Virginia's heart is regarding that. She has a couple cats. She's taken in another one recently here, I think. And so thank you so much for Virginia, for everything you've done, but also for having a very kind and special heart for people and for the animals that we all enjoy. Thank you.
All right, thank you Kent.
So Madam Chair, I have two directors on the line, not on the line, but holding their hand up on Zoom.
Okay, is there anyone else on the phone thing? Okay, so then we'll go back. I know I had people saying they couldn't, they didn't know, they tried to get on, but we'll go to the directors now. Actually, hold them off. We'll go to the public comment that's in the room and then we'll go to the directors.
Okay, perfect.
You wouldn't let us do a resolution for you.
Since this meeting's going a little casual, I thought it'd be okay if I just came up once and talked about all three rather than being a microphone hog and coming up over and over.
Let me, let me check with the attorney. Is that gonna be okay with you?
What's he gonna say?
We do have Ryan Burns in the audience. We want to make.
Ryan.
Okay. If you kind of just touch on them all.
Yes, yes, just briefly, thank you. First of all, for Mari, I'm so sorry, for Mara, I want to say how much I appreciated her efforts to improve how we functioned as a county. Her work to really make us a higher performing organization was really critical. She and John Bartholomew both worked on that for years and really appreciate that. For Mari and Kelly, you would not be surprised to hear this, I'm sure, but sometimes in department head meetings, it can be somewhat contentious. And I've always appreciated their calm, their focus, their professionalism, and that they really were very, very respectful hearing people out and sort of bringing us back on track. And that was really tremendous. For Kelly, a special thanks in addition to all her incredible work. When I asked her for that half of the fifth floor for our Child Abuse Services Team and Victim Witness, she was so kind to agree. And that meant years of construction dust and noise and they never complained. They were so, so very kind. And I want to say thank you too, to her for her amazing work on elections. I had the privilege of working as a poll worker this last time and it was so incredibly well-run, transparent. And the fact that if you called the office with a question, she was one of the people answering the phones till late at night. So really tremendous. And you, Virginia, thank you so much for your years of service. I think being Chair is a very difficult job. I think public comment must be always difficult, but particularly during the COVID era, working through Zoom, your diplomacy was very much appreciated. And I think it really helped us function very well during a very difficult time. So thank you for your years of service. Thank you to those amazing women and thank you for letting me do this, all three at once. Thank you.
Juan, and thank you for mentioning, and thank you for your years of service since you wouldn't let us thank you earlier. All right. We have, we have some more, we have some, some people sneaking in from the side. It's a team. Yes, my fashion guides.
On behalf of the Clerk of the Board Staff, which is also the Board of Supervisor Staff, we would just like to thank you for the last 12 years, for me 10, for Kathy, the whole 12. You've been really easy to work with, very diplomatic through Occupy and COVID and all of the other crises on a day-to-day basis. Appreciate your, your calm demeanor and your ability to run a meeting. So on behalf of your staff, congratulations.
Thank you very much. Couldn't do, anyway, yes Kathy, and I'll say a few things.
Virginia, Trey said it about all of how we feel about working with you, but we truly appreciate your calmness during board meetings and your ability to really keep things moving forward. It's been awesome working with you and you working with your other colleagues on the board. We just, we will miss your calm demeanor and your ability to just keep things moving forward. But most importantly, we'll miss those great shoes.
I'll still come in.
And, and we're excited that, that you're gonna no longer be our boss, but always be our friends. So it's a new role for us. We're excited for.
Well, thank you very much.
Yeah.
For allowing me that privilege. Yeah. And don't leave the room yet because I might say a few things, but. We'll see, we'll go there. Anyone else? Don't see any here. We can now go to the, we'll go back online to.
So I have Director Beck and Director Mattson both. So we'll call Director Beck first.
Sure, Director Beck. My computer's not working, so you, I'm letting you run the show with this one.
All right.
Good afternoon. I'm Supervisor Bass and Board Members. I just want to say thank you to Supervisor Bass for the support that she's provided to me as Director and also to DHHS's services over the years. A couple of things that weren't mentioned in, in the resolution is that she served as a member of the Homeless Services Committee with the City-County Collaboration, Eureka and Humboldt County. And I, I believe that her experience in city council really helped provide a better partnership and collaboration with the city. So I just want to say thank you for that. Also, she was also a member on the Behavioral Health Board and always provided really great input on, and the empathy that you have for our, our community and population. I, I just like, I just want to say thank you so much for all of that and I'll miss you.
Thank you Connie.
I'll miss you too. Actually, I'm not going away. I'm around.
Good.
Good. I got your number. And Director Mattson?
Yes, I too want to thank you for your 12 years of service, but also for your, your support for public works over the years. You know, you don't have very many road miles, but you were very supportive of our entire department. Your positivity, your, your empathy for the community as Connie brought up. You care about everybody in Humboldt County deeply. We're gonna miss that coming. We're going to miss that coming from you and your ability to run these meetings and always looking positive and looking for solutions in very difficult situations. You would, you would be missed by Public Works and I want to thank you for everything you've done for us. Thank you.
Thank you Tom. That's it? We're going to back us, us now? Okay. Supervisor Bushnell? I mean, oh, staff? CIO?
Thank you Chair Bass. I just want to wish you congratulations that you no longer have to come hang out with us every day. I think congratulations are in order for that. And you've made my job tremendously easier, which I thank you very much for because it is a challenging role. But you bring a calm and collected demeanor to everything. I don't, I don't think I've ever seen you go up even a decibel. So you are, you are very calm and collected. Maybe, maybe that's a good, I don't want to see that if there's still, yeah.
It's reserved for very certain people.
Apparently Rex has seen it quite often, so. But we wish you well in, in your new adventures. I know it's not a retirement, you're, you're just going on to bigger and better things, but stay in touch and come visit us and maybe come in and hang out for a couple board meetings and sit in the back and chuckle at the, you know, new ability to witness what takes place in here. But thank you very much for your service to the county of Humboldt as an organization and a community. Very much appreciated.
Thank you. Back to you. This is a very strange moment, yes?
Thank you. So I, I've only had the pleasure of working with you for two years and only knowing you for two years. Virginia, I really appreciate the guidance you've given me as a new supervisor and as a woman being a supervisor and in a role that I'm not, you know, wasn't something that I had done in the past. I also want to say sorry for Rex and I being to your, right here, you've had to deal with us. And all you have, oh, look over and we got that look from you and knew to shut up, so. I know that you're not retiring and I look forward to what you will accomplish in the future and your love of Humboldt and its citizens. I, I so appreciate that, the, how you really care about people, how you handle meetings. As Maggie said, public comment is difficult. You're a lot more patient than I could have been and I really commend you for that. Also, just getting to know you on a little bit on a personal level, I appreciate your dedication to your family, to your sons, and also how kind you are to our staff and just really bringing, bringing the board of five to full circle. I look forward to you being my plus one at many events, so.
I'm, I'm available for that.
I don't want to say congratulations because I know this is bittersweet for you, but I do look forward to seeing you in the public as not a supervisor and getting to know what you're going to do for this community and for Humboldt in your next role.
Thank you.
I have Supervisor Madron with his hand up.
Okay, Supervisor Madron?
Oh, thank you for a final time, Madam Chair. You are a wonderful human being and for me, you've been a great mentor. You've really helped me calm down a lot this last year and try to, you know, be more of a team player and look at things better. You've been a great mentor for me and I thank you for that. And I really look forward to now being able to call you without violating the Brown Act because I talked to one of the board members. So it'll be nice to continue to chat with you and get your advice as I know you're not going far away. So I wish you all the best in your leading the board. Thank you, Virginia.
All right, thank you Steve. Okay, so also, you want to say something else and then I'll say something.
You guys gave me canned version.
Yeah. Hey, yes.
No, I.
The unfiltered version.
Yeah, I have the privilege and am proud to probably have known Virginia longer than most everyone and since she was a pup and she, she learned community involvement from her father, from feeding the Humboldt State and College of the Redwoods football teams every year and having multiple fundraiser dinners at the restaurant and then her taking it over with her mom after her father wasn't there to run it anymore. And I can remember our little confabs on Thursday nights.
Oh yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, when you were a city, Jimmy Smith had come and we had, we'd have a wonderful time. So, and then I appreciated when you bought the house next door to me and we got to be neighbors for so many years. The line used to run right between our houses too, the first and the fourth district, but anyway, that's another story. Anyway, no, and I think you're, I think second to none, I don't know, I don't realize, I don't think Humboldt County realizes what they're going to lose in your value. Like I said, you and I fought a lot and probably didn't see eye to eye because you were always right and I couldn't agree with that. But I don't think the people of Humboldt County are going to realize till later on what a commitment and how committed and how much you have done. And I think you put politics in the trash can and did what was best for Humboldt County at all times, without an agenda, without anything else, no matter what anybody tried to say, because they did try to say it and I've always admired that because it was Humboldt County first, because you actually cared for Humboldt County and not an agenda. And I'm, I'm going to miss that part of you sitting next to me here. Seems like you've always sat here, you've done it two years, you've done it, you know, so after all these years and, and knowing you, and I know we're still going to be running around together, so I like that aspect, but.
Maybe you won't get mad at me anymore?
No, maybe I won't be, but you've done a hell of a job, Virginia.
Thanks.
And you've earned a lot of respect and you've earned it and you've, and you deserve all of it. And I'm going to miss you terribly sitting up here, but time goes on. It's going to be a lonesome six years without you up here.
I like the way you said that. Yeah, I don't even know what to say other than it's been awesome. I, when I, when Tracy and Kathy were up, I was thinking, Kathy, I was your representative when I was with the city too. So like I was actually your representative for 22 years and that's pretty cool. When I think about some people that I've been able to, you know, I can say that about, you know, it's a, and, and you, you've always were very kind. Whatever I did, if I made you mad as a representative, you never let me know, so. Probably was a few things, yeah, she might have told you. But no, it's been, it's been wonderful. It's, it is a scary thing to leave and it's, it is bittersweet. And I decided, made my decision back in January, I think Ryan was the first one that got the, the memo, whatever, last January and seemed like a good idea at the time, but as it gets closer, it does get harder to step away. But I've been going through all my old files and I noticed I kept every nice email I think everyone, anyone ever sent us and nice cards because people don't really take the time to do that. So if you, if you have someone who's elected that every once in a while you like what they do, send them something because we don't, we don't have much, you know? So I was going through all those, remembering a lot of good times and I ran into one from Supervisor Bone, when, the night he was elected, actually. I had sent it to him back in 2000.
2011.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And asking if he got any sleep that night. But I looked back and it was just thinking how long it's been and enjoyed working with you. It'll be nice not clashing with you over agenda items. I'll just come and sit in your office and complain about other things. So just thank you for the opportunity, everyone. And I wish this could have been a regular meeting where we could have had everyone together, but I'm happy to be here today and I'm not disappearing. I'm not sure if I'm going to come to board meetings, but I might be watching on TV or something. Yes?
Yes.
No, I'm going to, even though she didn't want to say anything, Maggie, I think we all say in all senses, it's not on the agenda and let the lawyer look at me with big eyes, you let her cheat.
Oh.
Maggie, thanks for everything. I can remember, I can remember nine years ago, sitting on the front steps with Jimmy Smith and I getting to introduce you and how proud I was that day. And that pride has never left me because you've done the job and more and done it with such, such an amazing grace, back when you didn't have people, back when we gave you people. And you've, you've, there's been bumps in the road for you and you've handled it well. And I know you didn't want anything said, so I just took this and I'm not supposed to be saying anything, but you nailed, you nailed it Maggie, thank you.
That was a good display to sneak that in there, so. Okay, I think we're ready to vote.
Supervisor Madron has his hand up.
Oh, Supervisor Madron, I'm sorry, I can't see, I don't, I mean, I don't have my Zoom up.
Yeah, listen, Chair, if we actually made the motion, if we didn't, I move the resolution.
We did? I think we did, but we can take a second, we'll, we'll take a third on it.
Take a flyer.
Yeah, we got a second. All right, I think we're ready to.
You second it.
Vote.
Okay. There. All right, Supervisor Madron, we'll start with you.
A big yes.
Okay, Supervisor Bone?
A small yes.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
And Supervisor Bass?
I can't say no, I guess yes.
What if I did no?
All right. And the motion carries. So that looks like it's the end of our, our business.
What, are we adjourned? Because I would like to say also to Maggie, and I know this isn't, but Maggie, you've truly made a difference in people in Humboldt County and affected many people in a positive way, my family included, and I just really want to say thank you.
We're adjourned.